I would like to remind everyone to make sure to turn off your cellphones or turn them to the vibrating position, please. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on TV, on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcasted on WMGJ Radio. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilman Williams is absent today. Councilman Avery?
Here.
President Eccles is also absent today and our meeting is being chaired by the President Pro Tem, Councilman Cannon. Councilman Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have made. Thank you for your blessings on us as a city, as individuals. I pray for wisdom and knowledge today for this council as they make very important decisions that affect us all. God, we just love you and thank you and ask for your guidance as we try to please you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the city council meeting held on April the 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of the count for the week of April 12th through the 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor's not here. Guess we have any today. Come back till it becomes end. Unfinished business, we have none today. Number nine, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 509 Reservoir Street in District 2. The State of Alabama, Tim and Randy Campbell, Michelle M. Mobley and Jean P. Sewell being last known owners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Builder Department. We started this case involving a burned house in May of last year. There've been no improvements to the property and there are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
The Chair, we entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Mr. President, since Councilman Williams is not here, at his request, we're going to ask for a seven-day table.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for seven days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 200 Washington Street in District 2. John R. Armstrong and GMAC Mortgage LLC doing business, Ditech.com being the last known owners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in September of last year. Been no improvements to the property, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
The Chair, we entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Again, Mr. President, since this is in Councilman Williams' district, he asked for a seven-day table. So make a motion to table.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for seven days.
Mayor, you have a proclamation for us today?
Two of them asked.
Okay, would you like to go ahead then? I'd like to ask David Ayer with EMA to come up, please.
Whereas the foundation of a humane and just society is the people's willingness to work together for the common good, volunteerism historically reflects the highest values of our democratic society in that regardless of the situation, station, age, race, creed, all may volunteer and thus rich rewards that come from giving aid to others while improving one's own skills and widening one's horizons. Americans are willing and eager to volunteer and bring people together in response to our community's critical needs. Our volunteers demonstrate that it is possible to bring people together in our response to our community's critical needs. It's the same thing. It is the duty of every citizen and leader to honor our dedicated volunteers and celebrate the volunteer programs that contribute to the quality of life in Gaston and our surrounding communities. Therefore, I Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the City of Gaston, do hereby proclaim the week of April 21st through the 27th as National Volunteer Week in Gaston and urge all citizens to join me as we celebrate this special day. And I will say, we have one of the best EMA groups and we have had for quite a while of any that I've ever seen and we appreciate them so much. Would you like to say?
Thank you, Mayor Guyton. Just a few words, and I'm here representing the EMA, I'm the volunteer coordinator, but I want to say a few words about all the volunteers in Gaston, which many agencies couldn't operate without them. The Red Cross, Rescue Squad, United Way, RSVP, I can't name all of them, I'm sure I leave somebody out, but all these people, some of them are full-time employees. They've got jobs, they take their off days, even some take vacation days to come and help and we appreciate all the volunteers in Gaston and all their organizations.
Okay, I don't believe anyone's here for this proclamation.
Whereas, alienating behaviors often found in high conflict divorce and custody situations and speaking negatively about a parent or two or in front of a child interfering with communication and visitation, discussing inappropriate information with a child such as details of the separation, court proceedings, financial matters, or behaviors that can not only destroy the bond between a loving parent and a child, but can cause child mental and emotional harm. Parental alienation takes advantage of the impressionable and dependent nature of child. Children, parental alienation deprives children of their right to love and to be loved by both parents. Parental alienation is considered harmful to children as the alienation tactics are confusing, frightening, and rob children of their sense of security. Professionals agree the problem of parental alienation is damaging to children and can affect them into adulthood with tragic consequences. There are more than 2.4 million divorced North Americans and in 2010, there were more than 21,000 divorced Alabamians, including the parents of more than 1 million children under the age of 18. With nearly as many unmarried couples in 2010, there were more than 25,000 unwed births with children separating. With awareness comes education and understanding and the power to stop the abuse of innocent children caught in the crossfire of the people they love. Dear friends, since God so loved us, we also ought to love one another. Love does not harm, no harm to its neighbor. Therefore, love is the fulfillment of the law. This year, organizers are doing something special by asking everyone to take 10 minutes out of their day at noon on April the 25th, anywhere in the state, and blow soap bubbles representing love. Therefore, I Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the City of Gaston, do hereby proclaim April 21st through the 27th as Parental Alienation Prevention Week and April 25th, 2013, as Parental Alienation Awareness Day in the City of Gaston. We're going to mail this to the people who requested. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 204 Ann Avenue in District 7. Herschel V. Pruitt and wife Lily Pruitt being the last known owners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in July of 2011. There've been no improvements to the property. There was a permit taken out in September of 2011 and again in April of 2012. You can see in the pictures, there have been no visible improvements to the exterior of the property. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
The Chair, we entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
The only thing I wanted to ask, Brian, we have done everything we can to notify these people that we're going to follow through with this. Am I correct?
That's correct.
By mail, they reciprocated. They know, I was just told they had a whole lot of things inside the house and obviously they're not, they're not. Okay, no problem. As long as we've done everything that we have to do. Okay.
And I understand, Brian, this won't qualify for a habit, I mean a cabin in the woods for being...
It won't if we, it won't if we tear it down, I'm sure. Unless I got a tent.
But Ben, you brought up another issue. You talked about they still have stuff inside. Are we still checking that out? Yes, sir. And, yeah.
I just, my thing, Robert, a neighbor said, oh, they've got something in there. Well, we've notified, he's done everything in the world he possibly can to let them know what's going to happen. And I just wanted to say that this morning, let them know, we have done everything we know to do.
Yeah.
No.
But I just know we had an incident where a property owner claimed that they had valuable goods in there and they disappeared and I'm not sure what was the outcome of that, but bottom line was, I don't like it.
We've had a couple of instances, I'm told, Brian, you probably know, where people called and said they tore it down, he had stuff in there, and we had the photographs, oh, and they dropped it.
I know, but prior to that, we, we had some, I don't know if they were false claims, we had some claims.
Yeah, I think so.
So I just want to make sure that we're still following it up. I think the mayor instituted that.
Yeah.
They are good. Okay.
Kind of like an arson case, you know, everything's fine, just the thing burned up. There was no meat in the freezer and all the good televisions were down the street. No big deal.
Okay.
On that note, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution rejecting all bids for bid number 3228 for annual grass cutting and debris removal. Due to the inadequate specifications and solicitation, this rejects all responses and authorizes the contract to be rebid. The Chair, we entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Nope. Well, the discussion is that the city is, Mayor, you want to talk about it? Let the mayor talk about it.
Which one are we on?
On the grass cutting that you said you were going to do?
We, yeah, I was going to comment at the end, that's right. I've got my lawnmower tuned up.
Well, that's okay. You can relate to the end.
I'm going to put the council over each district and they're going to be sergeant. No, I'm teasing. We're, we have a lot of problems. We have about 600 lots, a couple hundred the state owns, about 150 or so we own, and then about another 150 or something like that that we have liens on. And it's very hard to get around all of them, but we're going to take this on in-house. I think we've done it before, a long time ago. We're in the process of getting signs put up on the lots that we're going to sell. We have the address, the address or the name of the property owners on either side, so if you live next door to any lots that you see the city cutting or a sign on and you're interested in buying it and keeping the grass cut, we will give you the deal of the century on a lot. Because we don't need them. You know, we may give Habitat some lots to build some houses as well as any of the contractors interested in building some. We'll work with them really good to get something replacing that and get them back on the tax roll. And I'll go ahead and say too, on trash and debris, we still have a lot of trash and debris we're picking up, we're working in the districts. If somebody goes down the street and misses your pile, you call the office, 549-4646, and we'll make sure they go back and get it. But they're real busy because there's still a lot of trees and things down. By the way, I think we're the only city who picks all that up every week for, no charge. Most of the cities come out and look and say, we'll charge 50 bucks or 75 bucks, and we do it free. So sometime we may get a little behind, but it, you know, it's free, so we're working on it as hard as we can, just bear with us.
Mayor, would you please repeat that number again?
I think it's your cell number.
You would think so with the number calls I get.
No, it's 256-549-4646. And both the people in my office, they know how to get in touch with Public Works very quickly and we, I think they had a couple of trash cans that were missed yesterday. We've also had some mechanical problems on a few of the vehicles and people are out of work sometime, but we'll get it. You just call and let us know where and we'll take care of it.
And that putting signs on those lots should help, would promote those lots for sale.
That's right.
Really should. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Staying.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution appointing members to the CED Mental Health Board. This reappoints Bill Stewart for a term expiring April the 1st, 2019. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
I got it.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
CED Mental Health is Edgewall, Cherokee Edgewall and DeKalb County Mental Health is, serves those areas and I think do a great job, a good group of people, work hard at it.
Bill, how do you apply for admission? We have a couple of people that need to be put in.
You just show up at the door, there's a towel and the clinic, they'll take you in.
Okay. You guys get that?
In your case, just take your DD 214, that'll qualify you.
All right, Ben, thank you. They don't know what a DD 214 is, Ben.
That's your full military record.
If anybody wants to know.
The next one's a resolution reappointing and appointing members to the Regional 310 Authority Board. This appoints Ebony O'Brien for the remainder of her term ending April the 1st, 2015, and Virginia Henry for the remainder of her term expiring April the 1st, 2017. It also appoints Dr. Porter Foster and Derrick Williams for a term ending April the 1st, 2019. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Nope.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution authorizing amendment lease with Gaston Edgewall Patriots Association. This extends the lease for the Clubhouse Room and Warped Lost Rampant Theater for an additional 10 years and the amount is $1 per year. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Y'all going to be serving any food down there anytime?
We'll call you.
Good.
Absolutely. I don't think I want any.
You don't even think we might get a free hot dog or something pretty quick?
No tax on it.
No.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution authorizing agreement with L&amp;L Marine. This is for the city to sponsor a week-long tournament to be out October the 21st through the 25th and the amount is $5,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, you'll notice that this is a week-long tournament and not just a weekend or three-day tournament.
Oh, it is, okay.
It's a four-day tournament here.
Correct.
Week-long, it's four days, I think, isn't it, Mayor?
I think so.
It's four or five, which one is it?
21st through the 25th.
Okay, four days. That's five days. So it's 21?
They usually come in and practice a couple of days as well. They'll come in and practice a couple of days before they have a tournament.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution authorizing a tower lease agreement with Alabama Power. This is for Alabama Power to install a dish for communication equipment on the city tower at 909 Bellevue Drive. The amount is $350 per month for a period of five years with the option to extend the lease for an additional four, five-year terms. If extended, the monthly rent shall increase by 10% each term. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New businesses in today?
No new business.
Department reports, committee boards, do we have any remarks by the mayor and council? That'll be, Councilman Reed, you want to go first?
Sure. In passing, the golf tournament, Patriots, thanks again to everybody. It was probably the most successful one we ever had. We had a lot of people there, we raised some good money that'll be put to a good cause. Absolutely. Youth in government, I kept waiting around, Robert, for somebody to say something about baggy pants and so on and so forth. I liked the way those kids came about. I'm going to read you one resolution or ordinance that they came up with that's indicative of it, and if we had it on baggy pants, it wouldn't be a problem in the world. Mr. Patterson, he said, "The noise tolerance strictly enforced." This is his ordinance. Loud music will be banned in the city immediately. In respect to all citizens, it is necessary to prevent excessive noise from cars, parking lots, homes, and so on. That is disruptive and disrespectful to others. And here's the good part, a severe penalty will be assessed without warning.
That's for the young people.
So the young people are farther ahead of us as far as noise is concerned.
That's exactly right. They say, "We're sick of it, we're tired of it," and that's the way they put it in that form. Go ahead.
Councilman Stewart?
I'd just like to mention that we have 30-something social agencies here in Gaston. Most of them made up by volunteers and I just want to say thank you to all those volunteers that serve our city and our county. There's a world of them, they do a great job, just thank you, appreciate that.
So, yeah, Councilman?
That is it.
I looked over some of those ordinances and seen the TV last week and they had, when Youth in Government Day was here, and there was one that really hit home to me, it was about a tax for senior citizens. Did y'all see that? A one-day tax on senior citizens.
I skipped plum over that one, it went wrong. Delitter.
It said that our senior citizens deserves a tax-free day. And I'm getting towards that senior citizens right away, I mean, I'll be there, so I hope that happens in the next few years.
You said you're getting toward?
I'm getting towards it, yeah, you know.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood what you're saying.
In a few years, I will be there.
I'll be impressed.
I thought you was there. You drove a school bus when I was in first grade.
I did want to thank everyone who came out to the Saturday at Music on Meegen at Rip Regan Park. It was a great success, a great turnout. As usual, we did run out of hot dogs. Maybe one of these days, I'm going to learn to count how many we really need. I think we had about 200 we got rid of this Saturday. The third Saturday in May, we've already got it lined up, singers are already lined up, and I promise, we'll have plenty of food, we won't run out this next time. Councilman Avery?
Well, I mean, I'm surprised that you ran out of hot dogs. Normally you carry them over from year to year, I mean, from event to event, but that's good, you've got rid of them. So now, I'll come to the next one, because you've got, you're going to have some fresh hot dogs.
We are fresh, yeah.
Okay. You know, there are a lot of things going on this year in particular. This is the 50th anniversary year of a number of civil rights movements, the 50th year of the March on Washington, the 150th year of the Emancipation Proclamation. But there are a lot of things going on locally and nationally. But I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that this is also not only the 50th year, but the month that William Moore, a Baltimore mailman, was killed several miles from where we're sitting today during that movement. William Moore was a white postman who felt strongly enough about what was going on in the South that he decided to come South to protest what was happening. William Moore gave the ultimate sacrifice, he gave his life for what he believed in, and I just want people to remember him. As a matter of fact, we're in the process of trying to raise funds now to put a historical marker up on Highway 11 where William Moore was killed, so people will not forget the ultimate sacrifice that this gentleman gave for the rights of all people. So, please, ma'am and please, sir, keep all of those things in mind. This is also, like I said, the 50th year of the March, it's the 50th year that'll be coming up in September, the four young ladies who were killed, the 16th Street Baptist Church bombing, and so we just need to be very, very mindful of some of the things that are going on around us. Just wanted to remind people about that.
Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. David, are we still reading parts of the Martin Luther King Letters from Birmingham Jail on the radio during the month? Okay, so WMGJ is reading portions of that letter all during the day, and they will be doing that for the remainder of the month, am I correct?
At the board's discretion.
Yes, oh, okay, at the manager's discretion. Okay, thank you. I'd just like to say that Sixth Street Cemetery, that we've had so much, a lot of conversation about, a lot of activity, a lot of concern, my understanding is that Sixth Street Cemetery has been designated a historic site and will be on the national registry. Those communications are being mailed out as we speak to, I think, Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, to the mayor, to the courthouse, to the sheriff, and to our public judge, Bobby Johnson, in preparations for us to celebrate the fact that that is now a historic event, a historic site. And I would like to thank publicly a young lady, Cherie Bostick, Sherry Bostick. She has been diligent and tenacious, and I use that word very kindly, with her endeavors to make sure that this feat was attained. She has all the documentation, so look forward. I just want to make you aware of the fact that it has been designated. More information will be forthcoming, but Cherie Bostick, Sherry Bostick, and a group of people have been very instrumental in making sure that we attain the historic value of this cemetery at Sixth Street. Thank you.
Mayor Guyton? Yeah, Billy, to follow up on that, we have cleaned that off. It was really, really, the first time, it took a few weeks, and we cleaned that off, and she brought me that information about those other three lots, trying to get, find out about that before we can go in there and make that part of the rest of the stuff that's been so overgrown down there, but we're working on that too. I just wanted to say, we had a little incident at the Patriots Golf Tournament, and that really was a good cause yesterday. There's one hole where you hit up the fairway, and then there's a ditch, and then you hit on up to the green, and I heard a couple of guys lost a ball in there, and they got down there and the geese, there's a lot of geese out around the golf course, had a nest of eggs, and the geese had put that ball in the nest with the eggs. And these two guys were down there looking for their golf ball, and about that time, somebody said they'd killed three water moxes down there, and the geese came out of the bushes there towards the guys, and I thought we was going to have to get the paramedics out there to get them out. [laughing] Ben, did you know anything about that? I heard you had a bird's ID.
I think I resemble that remark quite well. I'm going to tell you all the truth of the matter, though. I reached down to get the ball, and Billy Yates was hanging over my shoulder to help me, he thought, and that duck flew straight up. I'm not kidding. And we thought with a snake it bit us both, and Billy sat down in the swamp, and I fell forward into the duck nest, and there was a golf ball that that duck, honest, had gotten up and put in that nest all them eggs. But I don't want to confess too big, because there's a sign that said, "This is wetlands, do not enter."
Oh, yeah, don't tell the Army Corps.
That was terrible. That's a federal offense, Mayor, by the way.
There was, there was a lot of humorous events out there. Actually, the foursome I was playing with was, you know, was pretty funny on most of the...
It was comical.
On most of the drives. That's all.
If we don't have any further business, have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We adjourn.